Okay, welcome everyone that's here, joined us here in council chambers this evening. This meeting of the Pecoson City Council from Monday, June 23rd. Call this meeting to order, and if we could all please rise and have an invocation and lead you in the pledge of allegiance.
Heavenly Father, thank you for this day and for the many blessings we have received in the city. As we deliberate the issues before us this evening, hearing a portion of your wisdom, help us to see that all of our citizens' best interests are looked out for. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
(Inaudible)
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 Okay, for council members, I know you, we've got a very thick packet here tonight. I've been put under a challenge that we can't get through this in under an hour. I believe that we can. It is summertime, but, and we all have things to do, and we have come through some difficult challenges before us, so, Vicki, you can start that clock. I know that came from you. All right. And I appreciate the city staff that's with us this evening. I appreciate the fact that you've come this evening. So, it's great for me to lead a city where the staff is as interested in running the city as council is. And I will tell you that there are places that are not like that. So, thank y'all for being here. We have a special presentation. This is introduction of new employees by the city manager, and we're looking forward to meeting our new employees. When you come up, just come to the center council, center thing there, and introduce yourselves, and don't be shy. Tell us who you are. You're gonna find that we're a pretty open group of council. We like to know who's working around our citizens, because it's important for us to be able to put a face with a name, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We have several folks that I'm happy to introduce this evening. What I'll do is I'll just read their names, and they can come up and tell you what they're doing with the city and what department they work in, and if they have an extra second, maybe what they did immediately before coming here, in terms of a job. The first is Cecilia Kemmer.
How you doing? My name's Cecilia Kemmer. I was in the military for so many years, got out, worked for waste management, mostly done trash all my life, pretty much, so this is kinda new to me, and I'm getting along pretty good with the guys, and we work well together.
Great.
Lot of teamwork, which is really good.
Are you down at Public Works?
Yes, sir.
And we look forward to seeing you down there.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Cecilia's an equipment operator one.
Okay.
Next is Tyler Ranga, Ragno, excuse me. Is he here? He's not here. Jason Finch? He's not here either. Oh, yeah, he is.
Mason, I'm sorry.
Forgive me, Mason.
How's everybody see?
Good.
Mason Finch, I worked in the Public Works Department as a maintenance worker one, and before that, I was a car salesman, and decided that I wanted a career change, so...
Good move.
(Laughter)
That comes from the car salesman on the...
Looking with authority.
Next up is...
Jason, thank you for coming this evening.
Next up is Julia Butler.
My name is Julia Butler. I'm working as a page in the library, and working in that position for a little over a week. I volunteered there for a couple of months before I was hired. I really enjoy working there. I've only been in Pecoson for about six months. I'm from New Jersey, the end of 2013, and so far, I feel very welcome here, and I'm really enjoying it.
Well, welcome, and we're thrilled to have you. The library's one of our favorite groups. They take care of us really well, so, it sounds to me like, would you talk again, 'cause that doesn't sound like a Jersey accent.
(Laughter) I was born in Virginia.
Okay, well, there you go. Well, welcome home.
I'm just back home.
Welcome home.
That's right. Thank you.
Next up is Cheryl Miller.
Hey, how you doing?
Nice. Nice to all. My name is Cheryl Miller. I'm an admin assistant in the Community Development Department. I grew up in York County, but lived in Hampton for a while after I got married, and moved back in York County in 2002. And before I came here, I worked for a hotel management company for 26 years.
Great. Well, welcome.
Thank you very much.
We're thrilled to have you here.
It's nice to be here. Thank you.
And lastly, if he's here, is it Daniel McDonald? Is he, is Daniel here? There you are, hiding behind Mason. Welcome, Dan.
Hey, how's it going?
Hey.
I'm Daniel McDonald. I just graduated from Virginia Tech, bachelor's degree, industrial and systems engineering. I'll be working with the engineering department, and mostly concentrated on drainage areas around Pecoson right now is mainly what I'm working on. Grew up in Pecoson, graduated in '09.
Great. Well, welcome, welcome to a job at home, and, but thrilled to have you, and I know that your experience and your expertise will really be appreciated. You know, if we get to do it all down here, you'll get to be very diverse as an engineer.
That's great to hear.
All right? Thanks.
Daniel was working with us throughout the summer in an internship, and we have one additional intern that's working with us, Daniel Brown, who's not here this evening. He's from Hampton University, so we, so we're lucky to have some inexpensive and energetic help this summer.
We like that.
And that's all I have on...
And not the inexpensive, just the energetic. Okay, moving now to the audience for visitors. Open that audience. If anybody would like to speak on any subject, especially if it's not involving one of the public hearings this evening, now is that time. Okay, seeing none, I'll close the audience for visitors, and ask council to consider approval of the minutes of the last meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the minutes of the regular meeting of May 27, 2014.
Second. The motion made in second that we approve those minutes. Questions or comments? I see no revisions up here, so Judy, please.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of seven to zero.
Okay, and now we'll move on to the public hearings. First is an ordinance amending articles, what's that, chapter 10, 1, 1.1, and 1.11 of the zoning ordinance. This is an ordinance pertaining to the required setbacks in the Village Commercial, General Commercial, and Research and Development districts. This is a first reading, and I will tell you that basically this is aimed at properties along Victory Boulevard, as I recall. So, you know, I know that sometimes when we talk in code language, that doesn't give you an idea of what that is, so that's, that's what we're talking about. And Randy, is there a staff presentation?
Kevin's gonna make it, Mr. Mayor, but I just wanted to point out to council members, there were a couple of attachments related to deciding that were inadvertently put in the wrong place in your package, so you don't have to flip back and forth. Our copies of those are here for you, and they relate to the first public hearing. Kevin?
Thank you, Randy, and honorable members of council. Before you this evening, we are gonna present one zoning ordinance amendment that actually affects three zoning districts, primarily their setback off of Victory Boulevard. These zoning districts are the General Commercial, the Village Commercial, and the Research and Development District. As you may recall, while presenting a separate amendment before you during a work session in March, we were directed to look into potentially reducing various required setbacks off of Victory Boulevard. And during our research, we discovered that the drainage ditch on each side is of varying width, but between 10 and 15 feet. As it presently stands, developers do not get credit for this perpetually maintained green area, as I'll call it. It exists, and from an aesthetic standpoint, it may be in the right of way, but it, it should remain in perpetuity. These ordinance amendments have been formulated to recognize this existence, and thus, we've reduced the pertinent sections by 15 feet. So first, in the Research and Development and the General Commercial District, these, these two amendments will mirror one another, because they're the exact same. The required building setback will be reduced from 60 feet to 45 feet. The required parking lot area will be reduced from 40 to 25 feet, and the required green area buffer will be reduced from 40 to 25. And now, in the Village Commercial, only one is affected, because that's the only one that is in existence there. Their parking has to be in the rear of the property, and there's no required front yard setback, so, with that being the case, the green area buffer will be reduced by 15 feet from 40 to 25. At the Planning Commission, this was originally presented at their main 19th meeting, and during that meeting, they received some public comments, one in particular from a developer who's interested in developing across Victory Boulevard from City Hall, asking that, actually, being appreciative of the language that we came up with, however, asking us to maybe take it one step further. Our language did not incorporate any relief for the existence of certain environmental features, where maybe our reduction wouldn't do, do a developer justice, potentially. So, they asked staff to revisit and to take into consideration these comments, and we did, and we developed a clause that would, in each of these sections, allow city council, at your discretion, on a case-by-case basis, to further reduce these required setbacks based upon the existence of certain environmental features. Primarily in the big woods, we're talking non-title wetlands, that may shrink a development footprint and make, you know, create a hardship. The Planning Commissions voted on this last week, and they are recommending approval of it by vote of four-zero. So I can open this up to any questions or concerns you may have.
Questions of council.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Isn't the Planning Commission seven people, or is it five?
It's seven people. We had three members absent.
Do we know what their thoughts are on it? What they have voted against?
Oddly enough, in May, we had the members, the chairwoman was present at both meetings. However, it was kind of a flip-flop between May and June, so all the members have seen it, and we've gotten blessings on all of it, except the language that we were asked to revisit. Of course, the members who were not present last week did not get to bless that, however, they did instill their faith in staff.
Okay. And my other question was, when you talk about green area buffers, is that about environmental use, or is that about aesthetics?
Aesthetics and screening.
Always.
In this, in this situation, this isn't, when we're talking environmental, it's more for Chesapeake Bay requirements, and they require, if you're adjacent to a perennial stream or any body of water, a 100-foot riparian buffer, so a natural existing vegetated buffer. So in this case, it's more aesthetics and screening from Victory Boulevard.
So if we were to, say, pipe the ditch, and it would be then covered by sidewalk and green grass, that would count as green space?
And as, as it's written currently, yes, but we created this and formulated this language with the understanding that Victory Boulevard may be widened at some point, and when it is widened, they may ditch, or pipe the ditch there. It's my understanding, Ellen's in the audience, my understanding is pipe ditches are not as preferred as a ditch that can swell a little bit more in a larger event. So we hope it's still there. That's VDOT's call ultimately, when they do the planning for that, and we can certainly revisit that language down the road, but I think in the present, this offers the most flexibility for development in Pecoson.
Right, but is it protecting the environment is my ques, is my concern. I agree that this is good for the developer. What I'm not sure is if it's good for heavy rainfall on high tide days, when we're flooding, and, you know, those ditches fill up once a year, every couple of years, anyway. Are we going to have, is it going to make problems by having more concrete and less grass and trees? And I think the answer has to be yes, that it would have, that there would be problems.
Well, I think with any development, you're gonna, with stormwater, you're gonna have a potential increase in discharge to our drainage ways. However, stormwater regulations are changing here soon, and Ellen, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm no expert in this. In fact, they seem to be changing daily, so, so bear with me, but my understanding of the new guidelines are, pre-development, post-development drainage levels should be relatively the same.
Beautiful.
So they should discharge no more into our drainage ways as they did pre-development. So with that being the case, it should remain unchanged, what that ditch takes. There may be fewer trees in that buffer, but that there should be, that doesn't mean that the developer on that property doesn't have to mitigate for what discharge they may create.
How close have we come to that, to these ditches overflowing? Have they overflowed in the recent past?
It would take a substantial storm event to do that.
I know they fill up.
I've seen them filled up, but I...
I've never seen them overflow.
I don't think I've seen them overflow.
I don't think I've seen them overflow either.
Let me try and keep us on track here on the, on the issue that we've got before us, and it's a, it's a very good point, Councilwoman Crawford, that, you know, we want to look out for drainage capacities overall. To your question, directly to your question, the cities, the ditches along Victory Boulevard fill up more from a tidal event.
Right. Especially if it's terrain.
Than from a rain event.
Right.
So, again, it's the capacity of the drain. But the ditches that we're talking about are on what property that's owned by Victory Boulevard, and really don't pertain to this ordinance. We're not talking about a developer going and covering the ditch and getting credit for it. That is VDOT's call. What we're talking about simply is the setback from the existing property line to their development, which is behind that ditch. So we will have to engage VDOT when they come to do new road construction, if that's envisioned in the next 20 years or so, but as far as the setback from the existing property line, that's what we're really talking about. And when, when you're four lanes away, basically, because the road is so prepared for, they're so far off the street today, that we're saying, how far back do they need to be, to be, can they get some credit for the reduction in setback area, so they can be a little closer to the street, so we can at least see them.
Right. I understand, though, you wanting to, aesthetically, I think moving them, giving them space is perfect. My concern is environmental.
I got you, and I just want to make sure that we're staying in our lane, which is, we're talking about the setback requirements this evening, so, is that right, Kevin?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And setbacks are not designed for environmental purposes? Setbacks are designed for aesthetic purposes?
It depends on what type of setback we're talking about. In this case, they're strictly, for the most part, aesthetic.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Kevin? All right. We have a public hearing this evening, and this is, I'm gonna open that public hearing and ask for comments of our citizens related to this topic. Anybody in the subject, anybody in the audience that would like to speak on that? And the staff says no. Okay, so I'll close that public hearing and ask for consideration by council. Is this, and this is a first reading, so, again, we don't have to take a vote unless y'all would prefer to take one.
I don't have a problem with it, so I'll move that we adopt an ordinance, amending the zoning ordinance by revising Article 11, Section 11-7, Article 11.1, Section 11.1-4, and Article 11.2, Section 11.2 through 7, pertaining to setback requirements in the Village Commercial, General Commercial, and Research and Development Districts.
Second.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to point out to you that the ordinance has in Section 4, the ability to dispense with the second reading.
I thought that was part of it, so, yeah, dispense with the second reading.
Okay, so let's make it public that we're gonna dispense with the second reading, okay?
Add it to the motion.
Add it to the motion in the second? Second. Okay. Okay, I think, further questions or comments? Seeing none, Judy, please.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you very much. And the second public hearing this night is an ordinance adopting the official zoning map of the city of Pecoson, and Randy, would you like to present on this? This is really cleaning up more than...
I'll introduce, and I'll let Kevin present. Several months ago, it came to our attention that there was a conflict between what was in our, the maps that we had been preparing and our official records. And as we worked through that issue, I worked with Debbie and Kevin, and I said, "Let us make sure that there are no other problems out there." So they worked, and you may remember that from week three or two. So they worked through the winter mines with the help of an intern also, to identify discrepancies that may exist, and then, once they were identified, then our staff worked them specifically. And we have a number of discrepancies from the 2002 last adoption, and they range, but essentially, they either didn't reflect previous action, I'm talking about in the map now, not the official record that the assessor keeps, or in, in, in at least one case, it was an error, was made at the time it was, it was done, and all of this was done some time ago. So this is, this is a decade-old cleanup. What we'd like to do, assuming that you're favorably inclined to this change, is to establish a new SOP, so that once a year going forward, we will officially bring back the map to you and ask you to formally approve any changes that were made during the year, so that we should, this problem should not reoccur. So once we find a problem, you have to diagnose it, charter court defects it, and then create an SOP to make sure it doesn't happen again, and I think we've done that. Kevin is prepared to walk us through it. Assuming that you are comfortable on first read, what our intention is, is to go ahead and prepare the new map for your review prior to the second read, so you can see what it all looks like. What Kevin's gonna speak to is simply those areas where a change is required.
Thank you, Randy. Mayor. This is a project we're pretty excited about. The last time the citywide zoning map was adopted officially was in November of 2002, so we're talking 12 years later, we're here doing it again. The map that's currently on display in City Hall and on our online GIS system was created in 2008, and that's when some of these inconsistencies come into play, and I'll get into that a little later. But during the last 12 years, staff has noted a handful of inaccuracies between the map and the one that's currently used, and what is available on the city real estate records, and that's what we used during our process, and I'll get into that in a second as well. But over the winter, we were fortunate enough to bring in an intern, Mr. Kyle Titlow, Jay Titlow's son, he's a member of the Planning Commission, and he worked to go through the city's online GIS system, our zoning layer, and he compared that to what was on the real estate card. And this is a property real estate card. This is City Hall. So he was, what circled right there is its zoning, which is separate from our zoning map layer, and making sure that that was consistent with what the map said. In total, of the city's 5,500, over 5,500 parcels, 5,531, 50 of them had inconsistencies. So staff did the legwork. It was 99% accurate, but of course, that's not good enough. We're talking about a zoning map. So staff researched all the inconsistencies to determine their true zoning, and that's what brought us to this map. So with that being said, we've broken them into two categories. One, the approved rezonings, rezonings that have taken place from 2002 to now, which resolutions exist, city council approved those. The second ones were mostly border properties. We noticed a trend, either border properties or near properties that had been rezoned in the past, and they were inadvertently mislabeled. So I'm gonna go through these rather, rather swiftly. This property off of First Lane, right behind the Cool Wave Car Wash, was rezoned from B2 to R3 in 2013. This is our most recent rezoning. The map is gonna be, gonna reflect this correction. This property, the Fountains of Pecoson property, as we call it, just south of Alpha Street, was rezoned from General Commercial to Village Commercial. The new map will reflect that. This is a property off of Minji Street and Brownsneck Road. It's actually split-zoned now. It was, portions of it, half of it about, was rezoned from B2 to RS, the single-family residential zoning district, in 2003. The new map will reflect that. This is a cluster of parcels at the northwest corner of Pecoson Avenue and Wren's Road. These three separate parcels, they were one parcel at the time, I believe, were rezoned from B1, which is our professional office district, to R1, the single-family residential zoning district in that vicinity, in 2006. This is a property in my neck of the woods down here, close to Amory's Wharf. It's really that last residential lot before you get to the Amory's Wharf property. In 2003, they rezoned a portion of it, the upland portion of the property, from C1, which is our conservation district, which generally the marsh in the city's own conservation, to R2 back in 2003. This is the kind of second phase of the Villas property. Both of these parcels, there are actually four parcels here, were involved in the same rezoning, however, not the same end zoning. The Villas property was rezoned from R1 to R3 in 2005, and that's the, the one on the, my left there. And then, the three other parcels, right at the northern corner of Hunt Landy Way and With Creek Road, were rezoned from R1, that same base zoning to B2, and this was back in 2005. Now I'm gonna go through the inaccuracies, and like I said, there was a trend, most of them are on the border of two zoning districts. So when the map was, when the digital map was created in 2008, it was simply human So I tried to be concise with these and keep them to one slide, or one slide if I could. The first property is up at the southern boundary of Victory Boulevard and Beta Street. Our present map shows it as B2, but it's actually Village Commercial. Down on the bottom here, we have more properties that were in that initial rezoning for the Villas, however, they were never actually rezoned. The present map shows R3, it's actually R1. And then, the present map just across the street there shows this property is B2, but it's in reality R1. And these are just south of the town Villas, the townhomes. This property, the property to the south was actually rezoned, and it's on, it's on a border. These are both border properties, and I believe this parcel was just inadvertently put into that rezoning request. It shows B1 right now, but it is R3, which is our mixed family, our high-density residential. And the property right across the street shows B2 right now, but it is R1. These are down at White House Cove. These are really tiny parcels. That triangular one there is the city's pump station. It shows R3 now, which is the high-density residential, but it's really R1, which is the single-family district in that vicinity. And then the smaller one shows R1, but it's actually R3. It's part of the White House Cove Marina property. And this is a parcel right at the corner of Pecoson Avenue and Terrace Drive. This is another border property, right where Reggins is and the Pecoson Avenue shops there. The B1 district kind of zigzags throughout that area. I believe when the map was being created, this, it just caught this property for whatever reason. It shows B1 on our current map, but it's actually R1. And this is down at Sheffield's Grocery. This property shows split zone right now, half of it being B1, half of it being R2. The R2 is inaccurate, and it should all be B1. And this is the last parcel. This is just south of Shady Oaks. It shows R1 right now. Its actual zoning is B1. Its actual zoning is B1. Planning Commission looked at the changes, I want to use that lightly, it's, they're inaccuracies. We're not rezoning or changing anything. They looked at the new map last week and by a vote of 4-0 recommended its approval to you all. So that concludes my presentation. I can answer any questions you have about our methodology or process.
Have the owners of each of these properties been informed that we're doing this?
No, they have not in this case because their zone's not changing. Our maps are being accurately depicted. Nothing's being rezoned.
So right now, even though the map is incorrect, if I went to talk about a property, the actual zoning is what would be accurate?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, council? Not all. I'm not even exactly sure why we're, why are we doing a public hearing on this?
It's a change to the official zoning map.
Okay. All right. Again, we are not changing the zoning of anything. What we are doing is cleaning up our map. And if there's anybody here in council chambers this evening that would like to comment on that, now is that time.
Let me confirm one more thing before we vote, please. This is only the, we're only changing the things that you mentioned tonight. There will be no other changes. Okay, thanks.
Okay. Seeing no one from the audience that would like to speak, I'll close that public hearing and ask for consideration by council. And I'll also note that this has the clause to dispense with a second reading. And Randy, what you said a few minutes ago kind of confused me on that point.
I'm sorry, didn't mean to. Should you wish to pass this on first reading, then what we would do is take these changes and reflect it in the whole city map so you'd have it before second reading, if you felt like you needed to see the entirety of the map.
I think, unless there's somebody on council, I think just a map for information after the action would be fine. Okay? Because I think it's always up for changes. And as you said, many of these were probably caused just by human error with the size of those numbers on that map. I don't know how y'all drew that anyway, to be quite honest. But, all right, with that said, in the public hearing closed, I'll ask for consideration by council.
Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance adopting the official zoning map of the city of Pecosin, Virginia, and dispense with a second reading.
Second. A motion made in second that we adopt that map with those changes and do so tonight instead of putting it off. Questions or comments? None. Judy, please.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you very much. Now, under unfinished business, the first item here is a zoning ordinance and subdivision ordinance. And this is on second reading on this. This is what we put off last week, or let's say, last week, last month. We had the public hearing at that time, is that correct?
We did.
And this is the second reading. We did not take a vote at that time.
That's right. Mr. Mayor, members of council, we made two modifications following the public hearing and the first read. First was the insertion in the ordinance of the diagrams that were referenced as part of the initial staff report. And second, we took a shot at addressing the language, lack of clarity as it related to, well, you can see it here. We took a shot at it based on the comments that Mrs. Crawford had shared, but I'm not sure we fully addressed your comments, Mr. Crawford.
I think it's fine. I called Debbie this week and we talked, and I think it'll.
Is that in regards to the side yards setback?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay. So if everybody's good with the language and the language changes, I'll ask for consideration by council.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance by revising Article 1, General Provisions, Section 1 through 3 definitions.
Second. A motion made in second that we approve this ordinance and the subdivision ordinance amendments on the second reading. Questions or comments?
Yes. Randy, the diagram that's in here now, if I'm correct, that is the same diagram we had when we had the first reading of this?
Yes, sir.
And we requested this diagram be incorporated into this to make it clear.
Yes, sir.
And this is just kind of picking on words, but contiguous, I know what that means, I understand it. But used in this context, I found it to be a little bit confusing. So not that it needs changing, but I just wanted to point out.
My problem was that and a but, but we worked it out that planning people have their own language. They know what it means. It means something specific to them.
That's perfectly put because when I called Debbie, I feel like I'm talking to a different language as well, so.
Well, you should try talking to Ellen. I can hear him language right to my head, or she's nice to me anyway.
You should hear talk to each other.
All right. So we have the motion made in second. Judy, please.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, the second item under unfinished business is another zoning ordinance, is this regarding to the PUDs?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
There is a subdivision ordinance that was part of the last one, too. It's right behind you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let me go back there.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance amending the subdivision ordinance by revising Article 2 definitions.
Okay. Motion made in second that we approve that also, and that went with the other issue. All right. Questions or comments by council? Seeing none, Judy, please.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay. All right, now, the zoning ordinance regarding PUDs, planned unit developments, and what does that mean?
Mixed use.
A mixed-use development, okay. And this also is a second reading? Would you like anybody to reintroduce this?
Only if it would be helpful to council.
Anybody from council need a reintroduction? All right, somebody prepared to make their motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance by revising Article 8.4, Planned Unit Development, Mixed Use, Overlay District, Section 8.4-5, Perimeter Buffets and Open Space.
Second. A motion made in second that we approve that zoning ordinance also on its second reading. Questions or comments? Judy, please.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay. Under new business this evening, we have an ordinance adopting additional personnel policies.
Mr. Mayor, you may recall, we've been on a journey without an HR department and not wanting, and not having money to spend on a consultant. We've been updating our HR policies on our own. This is the third of four actions. Our last action will be to go back through all the ones that you've approved in the last two years and do a comprehensive reread and make sure everything connects because we did them over a period of time. These are largely housekeeping in nature. The way we work on these is we assemble a group of senior staff to include department heads and also other key division staff. We go through it as a group, we send it out for comments to the constitutional officers and the department heads, and we received none in this case, and I think it has to do mostly with sort of the vanilla nature of what these policies are. There are two things I'd like to point out to you as a little bit different. First, something which is not required, but something we're putting forward, which I think is worth consideration and recommend it to you, and that relates to hazardous weather. On days where we're closed because of hazardous weather, like completely closed, there are a number of folks that don't have to come into work and a number of folks that do. And what we're recommending is on those normal days where the city is closed for weather, for the whole day, that for those people that work, that we give them eight hours of comp time. As a way to say, thank you for being out there in the hurricane and the snowstorms and everywhere else. The other is not a policy change per se, but it is a change in the policy document, which is to reflect the fact that the city participates in the VRS Health Insurance Credit Program, has for some years. But that wasn't reflected in our policy, even though it has been a practice and an approved program of the city for some years. So that's a change. Hopefully, it'll help highlight to folks as they're looking towards retirement, it's all right there. Beyond that, I would say that the balance or suit the housekeeping and updates.
On your one, and then I applaud you for the eight hours of comp time if you're here for hazardous weather. Is that time-dependent as far as, is that got to be within the year of service? Is that something you can carry over so that we don't? Let's say we had an extended storm period, is that something that you have to use within that year, or is that something that?
We have a policy that says, and I may get the nuts and bolts a bit wrong, but I think I can articulate it, which is if you have comp time, you need to try to use it. If that's impossible, then once a year, we pay off excess comp time.
Okay.
Unless the employee wants to relocate.
That's fine. I just don't want to put us in a box for an extended period.
No, it's, it never falls off the end of the earth for the employee.
That's what I was looking for.
It's never lose it or use it.
Okay, got it. Okay. All right, council?
I have a question. It's on approximately the 10th page under the hiring, recruitment and hiring and promotion. The second page of that where it says selection procedures. It looks like there's a couple of underlines which is being added.
Thank you for highlighting that, by the way.
The applicants whose qualification, knowledge, skills.
There you go.
That one?
Yes, ma'am.
It says most closely match or exceed those established for the position, and we're adding in and who reside in Pecosin shall be invited for an interview. Under that policy, we would never have hired you because you didn't live here. Can we put or are willing to?
It's not, its intention is not to exclude anyone, but simply to, we interview those persons that most closely match. In addition to that, any person who is a resident of Pecosin who meets the minimum qualification or exceeds it, we also invite them to interview as well. That was the intention. We're not intending.
To me, it reads that you're only, you have to live here to be interviewed. I didn't like that. I was willing to put or are willing to relocate. No, if you're saying that in addition to the ones who live here.
That is what we intended to say.
Then it should be or rather than and. And/or.
You are correct.
So if we could just make that change to or, change the underlined and to or, does that, does that read?
Yep, right there. These applicants whose qualifications, knowledge, and skills must closely match or exceed those established for the position.
And.
And or those who reside in Pecosin with minimum requirements. I think we should just clarify if what you're saying is true.
Yeah, it needs to be rewritten.
It needs to be rewritten. I apologize. I thought we covered it, but we missed it. The intention of the section is that all persons who closely match will be invited for an interview.
Okay.
In addition to that, any person who is a resident of Pecosin who meets the minimum requirements or exceeds them shall also be extended the same.
And I think that's a really good policy for city government.
I do, too.
If you could consider this with that statement of intent, then we will clarify the language.
I think we're good with that.
Yes.
All right. Thank you for picking that up.
We looked at it so many times and we missed it.
One other correction, too, minor, but under transportation, item six.
Where's that? What page?
They're not numbered, but it's under travel policy and procedures.
Back toward the front.
Yeah. Transportation, item six. The second bullet, I think that's supposed to read, each trip does not exceed five miles from total.
Still on the which number?
Number six. The second bullet.
Because it's letter left off.
Instead of OT, it's, I think it's supposed to be NOT.
Okay.
Yeah. At least I corrected twice.
Okay. Counsel, are you ready to make a motion with those two changes?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance adopting personnel policies for inclusion in the city's Personnel Policy Manual, adopted August 27, 2012, and amended January 13, 2014, and January 27, 2014, with the two additions recommended.
Second. A motion made in second that we approve that personnel policy.
Dismissed the second reading.
Changes.
And dispense with the second reading.
Okay. And is that okay with the second? Do the second.
Henry.
Henry.
Okay, dispense with the second reading. Okay. All right. Judy, please.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Next item under new business is a resolution making appointments to the various boards and commissions. These boards would be the Colonial Behavioral Health Board, the Virginia Alcohol Safety Action Program Board, Workforce Development Consortium, and Middle Peninsula Juvenile Detention Commission.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution making appointments to various boards and commissions with the following names inserted. For the Colonial Behavioral Health, Mary H. Diggs. For the Virginia Alcohol Safety Action Program Board, Charles Buffington. And if it's okay with the rest of council, I will volunteer to stay on workforce development. And the Middle Peninsula Juvenile Detention Commission, Thomas Gidding.
Just second.
Second.
A motion made in second that we approve the resolution making appointments to the boards with those names inserted. Okay. Judy, please.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay. Next item is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into contracts for lawn care and maintenance service for the school and city grounds.
Mr. Mayor, we can speak to this if you'd like. I think it's.
I think it's fairly straightforward, except for the one thing I will say is that this company, this is a reapportionment of that contract. Is that correct?
With that correct.
Looks like the same contractor as you had before.
It's two separate contracts.
Okay. But these are the guys that are doing this maintenance today. Is that what I'm?
If you change revenues against current contract, that will actually change that what you want for the.
Okay.
For City Hall.
Okay.
They will assume you're in the schools.
Okay, thank you. All right, council, prepared to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with James River Ground Management and the Lawn Barber for landscape maintenance services.
Second. A motion made in second that we approve this contract, these contracts for lawn maintenance. Okay, questions or comments?
Just one comment, Mr. Mayor. The sample contract included in this is misspelled on the portion where it says compliance of state law regarding authorization it should be, okay? Transact business and the Commonwealth.
Got it?
Got it.
Got it? Okay, thank you. All right, we have a motion made and second. Judy, please.
Councilman Green.
Ah.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Ah.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay. Next item is an ordinance amending the erosion and sediment control ordinance.
I think, Mr. Mayor, to draw your attention to the second paragraph, as staff reported, it highlights the totality of the change. Changing the, to keep up with changes at the state level, change soil and water conservation board to state water control board, and change what the word department now refers to in the definition section, and then renumbering the state citation as it changed. That sounds simple. Alan and with Dan's assistance, worked it through. I don't think there's any substantial change to it.
So this is a title change only, is what we're saying. Basically, titles of the, of the state departments or whatever that controls this. Okay. See no other comments? Is there somebody prepared to make a motion on this ordinance?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt an order to amend the code of ordinances of the city of Pecosin, Virginia by amending chapter 34, article three, erosion and sediment control to revise code of Virginia citations. Second. Dispense for the second reading.
Second. Okay. Motion made and second that we approve this ordinance. Questions or comments on this? Lot of bookkeeping tonight. All right, Judy, please.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Ah.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Ah.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay. Next item is a resolution authorizing city manager to execute the amended and restated member agreement with VML insurance programs.
Mr. Mayor, we can do a report of this if you'd like.
This is just.
It's another one of those housekeeping.
Housekeeping item. Sometimes I'll just use a consent agenda. But that's okay. Does anybody on council need a reinstruction on what this is, or we prepared to move forward? Okay.
May I move we adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the amended and restated member agreement with VML insurance programs. Second.
A motion made and second that we approve this resolution on dealing with VML insurance program. Judy, please.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Ah.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Ah.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay. Next item is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Sheehy Ford of Richmond for police vehicles.
Mr. Mayor, if I could walk you through part of this, at least, in attempting to be clear, I'm not sure we were in every case, maybe we were overly clear, but we're talking about three vehicles here. Recently, we had a vehicle involved in a work-related accident on his way to court in York County, and that vehicle, which was an older vehicle, was totaled. We need to replace that. And in addition to that, in the current fiscal year, due to some vacancy savings and concerted effort to save money, the police department was able to save enough within its budget to buy an additional vehicle. As you know, we've not been able to regularly budget vehicle replacement, so as we have at least one other year in the past, tried to identify some savings for that. So that's, that's the second vehicle, a replacement, a 2014 fiscal year vehicle. The third vehicle is the one that was included in your adopted budget for next year. Any one vehicle is under my signature authority. However, it's three vehicles, therefore it's significantly above mine, and that's why we're bringing this item, so as to, you know, fully comply with purchasing policy. The question is always asked, why, why do we go with, with someone else's contract? They use, they use their size to get the preferential contracts, and normally, when a local government bids a contract, they make it so that others that are also local governments can ride the same. And Teresa assures me that this is the most cost-effective option for contracting 2015 Ford Police Interceptors that is available and is even better than state contract.
Okay. That's why we didn't go with the local dealer instead, and because we basically latched on to another contract. All right, so. Counsel?
May I move that we adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Sheehy Ford of Richmond for police vehicles. Second.
A motion made and second that we move forward with buying three police cars. Cut great to the chase. All right, Judy, please.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Ah.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Ah.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to one.
Okay. Next item is an ordinance making additional appropriations and transfers for fiscal year 2014.
Mr. Mayor, as is often the case when we have a resolution or ordinance before you like this, the vast majority of items come from either donations or grants. Before you is a, an action which would appropriate $11,700 in donations received by the library, $1,700 in support donations received for our Parks and Rec program, for, for the 700 of which from the American Legion for improvements to our sign on Victory Boulevard, and $1,000 from Atlantic Plumbing and Heating to support the annual Easter egg hunt. The police department received an additional $1,156 in state asset forfeiture funds. The economic development department was successful in getting two grants from Virginia Tourism Corporation, $5,672 and $2,557 respectively, first for the Pecosin Marine Tourism Marketing Program, and the second to help support the, our base, Pecosin is the Place Tourism Marketing Program. Those sort of take care of the donations and grants. The last item on the page is to let you know that our costs associated with the Comprehensive Services Act this year exceeded the budget by $52,000. Based on the match that we get from the state, our cost is $13,200. That's really a non-discretionary expense. In addition to that, police department received a little more than $500 in grant funds relating to VOPEX. And then we have a couple of additional items. The first is a, an ordinance transfer of $2,500 from the 2014 contingency to community service as a donation to PAWS. You recall, they were here recently and asked for you to consider assistance for them to essentially help them offset the real estate costs associated with the facility that they're running. I have spoken with them, and it is our joint understanding in the future, these types of requests will come through the normal budget process, but because of the fact that they didn't receive their 501(c)(3) process until, until well into the budget process, the timing just didn't work. Second to last, asking you to consider appropriating $25,000 into the CIP for the purposes of future land acquisition pertaining to the Oxford-run drainage ditch. Their, that acquisition is not imminent, but this is there in case we need it. We're still hopeful that the state is going to come forward with any funds that may be necessary there pertaining to the current alignment. Lastly, is an appropriation of $550 from the Kids Island Club for Kids Island. They continue to, to make progress. Every few months, they're doing something else to support the park, and we take what they're able to fundraise, and we add in whatever's necessary to, to help, and we continue to move forward. We'll be glad to answer any questions.
I don't have any questions. I'm going, I'm going to do the favor of one, one clarification, and I want the citizens to know this, because $25,000 is a, is a pretty good chunk. When the state contract many, many years ago put in the Oxford-run drainage system, they appear to have missed the mark and put it on somebody's private property. With that being said, we expect the state to come clean with that citizen, but now that the city owns that drainage system, we're just putting that money in contingency so that it is available, so that it shows that landowner that we're basically going to come through if the state does not. So that's the only issue that probably some of you may be caught unaware of. So that meant to call most of you. I think I called several of you, but I never got all the way through the whole park gamut on that. But that's what that is, and hopefully we won't have to spend that if the state does what they should do. Okay. With that said, is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
I have one question. Should we talk after the motion?
Yeah, let's talk after the motion.
May I move that we adopt an ordinance making additional appropriations and transfers for fiscal year 2013, 14.
Dispense.
Second. And dispense for the second reading.
Second that, too.
Give you a big card.
Obviously, it's got a dispense. Okay, we have a motion made and seconded. You got the second, right, Judy? Okay. All right, question?
My question was the $700 from the American Legion for improvements to the signpost. Once upon a time, we discussed upgrading that sign to being electronic, and I know that the middle school is currently in the process of updating to electronic, and I didn't know whether, I'm not quite sure exactly how much they cost, and it's more than 700, but that would go a good ways towards making that transition. Is that what's happening?
No. If I could, Ms. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Two things. One, we've already made the improvements to the signpost, the plexiglass and other things that you may have seen there.
With American Legion labor donated.
With American Legion labor donated. Badly needed. The other issue pertains to whether or not electronic signs are permissible in the city, and right now, they're not. If the council would like us now or in the future to explore, to relook at that ordinance, we would be happy to do so. I know that Dave, for one, would, would welcome that opportunity.
We welcome it. I think the one thing for council to, to consider, and I'm not saying this is a good idea or a bad idea, I think certainly there, there's a good idea. It's once we consider it and we do it on city property, it'll quickly go to commercial property for the same, same basic thing. So you just have to factor that in, but I do think that there's a lot of, we can do more communication on that media than we do today.
Oh, they're much more versatile.
I agree.
You paint words on a sign, it's stuck.
I am with you. I just know that one of the, the main thing that you get, we've already had one business who's at least expressed an interest in doing that, and so if you take that and multiply it down, down the road, you just have to be wary of how much that is. All right.
Or you could make it sitting on stuff only. So right now, I better get in touch with the.
You could.
School system, right? Don't want them to hold off.
They need to be in conformance with the ordinance, so I guess we'll take that.
But that is something to look at. There was an article in the paper today about some other municipalities doing that, because electronic sign is the way that everybody, the advertising world is going, especially outdoor advertising.
I, I agree wholeheartedly.
Do you mind if I ask Debbie a question for getting to this? Debbie, could you come forward?
Oh, sorry.
And if you don't know the answer, it's okay. We can go get it, but.
Bring that planning terminology up here.
Something, signs abutting the road. No. I may not remember all of the pertinent details, because this happened before I came, but at one point, the city was Cyrus of putting an electronic sign where its current sign is on Victory Boulevard. My understanding, please correct me if I've got the facts wrong, because again, it's oral history for me. It went to the architectural review board, and the architectural review board said no.
The board is own appeals.
Sorry, the board of zoning appeals. And is that, so that any, like, for example, the school, which is not in the central business district, if they wanted the same kind of sign, they would have to go through the same process? Is that correct?
Yes.
All right.
Because they're not allowed by right in the sign ordinance.
Okay. Thank you. Would you like us to?
Let's just make sure that we don't get our schools in front of our city in this particular case. And I'm not saying it's a bad idea, and I would like, I think all of council would like to consider this in the near, in the near term. Is that correct?
Well, needs to be looked at strongly. Just, do you want to have Mercury Boulevard like With Creek Road? That's.
That's really what it comes down to, or do you want to do a government only? And I can tell you, government only is, I hate, that's my personal opinion is, but we should only do what we allow our citizens to do. That's, that's my, my theory on that. So it's, it's really a question of can you confine it enough that, that it's palatable.
I think what we were really objectionable to was this great big, high-powered incandescent bubs flashing right beside the road, like the big arrow signs and stuff. And now, when we're talking about the LEDs and the digital stuff, I think it's a totally different thing.
I'm good.
Well, me, too.
I, I think we can, I think we can work with it. It's just hard to draft the language, I think.
That's something we definitely need to work through, because you could quickly turn it into Mercury Boulevard.
Yeah. And if you're talking about a one-measured sign, one line, and it changes messages, you're gonna miss several messages going by at 35 miles an hour.
All I know is.
I personally like the sign now where it has everything on it, and I'm looking for what I want to read.
Yeah. All I know is with today's technology, you can put up a football program if you want to. You can watch it live on their sign. So.
I know.
It would be a difficult task to, to put it to language, but I think that we need to go that way, because we do have to look towards the future, and I think that is the future. All right, so Randy, you'll take action on that. We have a motion made and seconded, I believe, since we got off track here. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And ready to take a vote? So Judy, please.
Councilman Green.
Ah.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Ah.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay. And item eight is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Seco Office Systems for copiers. Is it gonna work better than the phones?
If they.
The phones do work, just I poke fun, because the phones are smarter than, than the mayor is at how to use that phone. So it's really not the phone problem. It is, it is my, my functionality in using it.
I, I think you'll find the new photocopy is equally challenging, as will I, sir. And I've given up on the fax machine completely. Teresa can speak to this if you, if you'd like her to. In case you're wondering, Coeco is Carolina Office Equipment Company. Looked that up today.
Okay. All right, is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Coeco Office Systems for copiers.
Second. A motion made and second that we get some new copiers that are easy to use. Okay?
Guarantee on the last.
Okay. And Judy, please.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Ah.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Ah.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Comments to the city manager?
Mr. Mayor, I uncharacteristically have several items, and they all come in the form of good news. Sometimes good news born out of tragedy, but good news nonetheless. We received a couple of, of letters or emails recently, which I'd like to read a portion of if I could. I'm gonna try to, to omit certain details so as to not inadvertently trip over HIPAA. But the first, Councilman Crawford was kind enough to share with me. It was an email that she'd received and asked that we forwarded on, recognizing the great job done by the Pecosin Fire Services responding to a fire in my brother's house, I'm not gonna read the address, during the early morning hours of June 6. Simply put, they were incredible. According to one of the insurance inspectors, if they had arrived 30 to 40 seconds later, the house would have been a total loss. Fortunately, their quick actions prevented further damage. The house suffered significant damage by a cord that malfunctioned in their den. My brother acted fast and got his family out immediately and called the fire department. They came through big force. At least the structure is intact, and most of the damage beyond the den and kitchen was smoke damage. My brother, his wife, their son, and their dog will be out of the house for the next four to five months, instead of a year. I give our fire and rescue services all the credit for that. They were like a well-oiled machine. I witnessed it firsthand, because I live across the street. It was a very serious situation. My brother had singed hair on his back and escaped with little time to spare. Dogs are part of the family, too. Certainly not humans, but they mean a lot. Against all lives, their dog was saved. He hid under the bed, and that may have saved his life, according to the email. I don't think many of us realize that these individuals are literally risking their lives to protect the citizens of Pecosin and their property. They are all heroes to me. Everyone acted with the utmost professionalism. Everyone acted with the utmost professionalism and compassion. They not only focused on the fire, but more importantly, they made sure my brother's family was okay. Each of them received oxygen, including the dog. And they were thoroughly checked over to make sure they were okay. I wanted to share that with you. It's a real, real-life story to a family that...
Thank you for sharing that, Councilwoman Crawford, as well.
One other to share, this is a police feel to it. Dear sir, I want to express my sincere appreciation, appreciation to your wonderful officers who assisted me on two recent occasions. My husband fell early one morning and required assistance. Being a big man, he required lots of help to get up. He was embarrassed, to say the least, but our officers handled it with dignity and utmost courtesy. On May 16th, I came home to find my husband had passed away, and again, your officers had the utmost concern for me and my situation. While I know most of your officers by face, I don't know all their names. Detective Turner and Officer Turner got me through the two hours until the body was moved, and I am truly grateful. We are lucky to have folks like that in Pecoson. And I'm, privacy, I'm not going to read the name, but I wanted to share that with you and share it with public as well, and to express all of our thanks to them. I also wanted to share with you that last Wednesday, Judy was recognized for her outstanding professionalism by the Virginia Local Government Managers Association. Comment to share that recently, we received the GFPA Award for Excellence in Financial Reporting. And lastly, to thank you and all the people that worked so hard on the Mayor's Cup Blood Drive for the American Red Cross. We exceeded even our expectations, and since we've won every time we participated, to exceed our expectations is significant. We had hoped for 36 pints of blood, and they collected 49. And it wasn't just those that were able to donate, but also those that supported them and fed them and checked them in and cared for them, including the folks from the Red Cross. We're all grateful for that. That's all I have, sir.
And the Pecoson Library for sponsoring the food. Great organization for helping us all out. Okay. Council, council directives. Councilman Vernal, we'll start down there.
Well, first of all, a good thing to recognize is that we will be getting a full-time family practitioner, Dr. Ledger, in town. I believe it's the 7th of July, something that I know has been lacking and needed in Pecoson for a long time, and I think that's a real positive advancement that we have. And then asked a question that I'm afraid of the answer, and that is with the changes to the state budget, particularly some of the funding that apparently was reduced for local police departments, do we have any indication of what they're going to do for us or to us?
No, sir, not at this point.
That's it?
Okay. Councilman Green?
Just to remind everybody, tomorrow is the Food Bank Day from 10:00 to 1:00 at previous city hall, and we will have additional meet again. And the Lions Club will be hosting it, and they're also bringing additional bags of food that they collect each time they host this event.
Okay. Councilman Ayer?
Nothing.
Okay. Bud?
Yes, I'd like to welcome my new city employees. Really glad to see them out here tonight, the ones that were here, and glad to have them on board the city. And Councilman Green, again, negated to mention the fact that he and his pride work hard with that food bank, and I'd like to commend them for their efforts there. They're doing an excellent job. And I want to make an out-loud comment to Councilwoman Crawford also. She's different than us, and she's wired a little bit different, and she thinks of things that I would never think of, and I really do appreciate her being around us.
Okay. Congratulations for being wired differently, Councilman Crawford.
Good, just says a wayward word.
All right. Tracy, do you have anything?
No, no, thanks.
Okay.
And nothing else.
Okay. Three things, you know, I, too, want to say something about the blood drive. I thank everybody on staff and in the city. I know the Pecoson Business Alliance came out and supported us this time. That was a big difference. So, but thank you for that service. It's not just about what did for the city, but the 49 people that will probably require that help when they most desperately need it. But I look for bigger and bigger each year, and it's just fun, and we poke a lot of fun at each other as we go through that, but we do have a good time. And so, thank you, and thank you, Teresa, for helping organize that. And Lisa Holloway for making sure that everybody showed up to their appointed position on time. I will mention two organizations. I know we had a runner-up in state baseball tournament. I will tell you that those fellows forego their graduation to do that. I would like to have them come to council and get a thank you from us for the great run at it. But the biggest thing is, you know, that they represented the city so well. And I never heard a single whine about that. You know, that was something that we could have heard a lot of back feed from, but they just kind of took it on. So I'd like to see them here. And we also had an Odyssey of the Mind World runner, I guess they were fifth, at the high school level, which is impressive, all the more. And I'd like to have them come through in the coming weeks so that we can talk with them as well. And Councilman Green, I still offer the council services for one of your food bank collections.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you.
I think it would be good for us to be out there and meet these folks, including the other volunteers, because I don't know if seven of us are enough. But I really think that we should help with another organization.
All right.
So please mark us down for that. And I think that's everything that I've got.
Need for a short closed session.
Yep. So basically, we'll move to a closed session now, and that closed session is pursuant to Section 2.2, 3711a3 of the Code of Virginia, to discuss disposition of publicly-held real property, and that is on Cove Road.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Okay, motion made in second that we go to a closed session. Judy, please.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you. And we are closed session. Is this called an ordinance or a resolution? Okay. We are reconvened from closed session, and I'll ask for a motion that we certify our closed session.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we certify our closed session, and that we talk about only what we convene our closed session to talk about.
Second.
Okay, motion made in second that we certify that. Judy, please.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay. And motion to, oh, is there a motion coming out of the closed session?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to advertise for public bid two pieces of property on Cove Road, specifically tax map parcel number 3201000014 and 0013.
Second.
Okay, motion made in second that we offer those two parcels into the public bid process. Questions or comments? Seeing none, Judy?
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.